Call the meeting to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everybody. You know it's spring when you drive by the softball field and they have their first home game, correct? All right. We'll move on to the second item, which is to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by Roy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Carry. Move on to item number three, to approve the consent calendar, which are the minutes of our last meeting of March twenty-sixth and the payment of bills.
So moved.
So, okay.
Motion by Roy, second by Doug. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Carry. Brings us to item number four. Consider approval of Resolution nineteen forty-two, authorizing application for the twenty-twenty-four Sourcewell Community Match Funds for Lincoln and Wilson Park Playground Projects.
So a copy of the resolution in there. Uh, Sourcewell has a variety of different funding categories, which will the next agenda item is a different one as well, but the ten thousand is a uh, basically an autom- automatic funding once per year uh, for the city. We just have to identify the project and it's a uh, matching uh, grant opportunity. So we um have some money budgeted for Wilson Park Playground. Uh, we're gonna apply for the grant to be able to do rubber mulch under the existing equipment and then also um, down at uh, Lincoln Park.
So moved.
Motion, or uh, a motion by Mary, a second by Doug, to approve Resolution nineteen forty-two. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Carry. Item number five, consider approval of Resolution nineteen forty-three, authorizing application for the twenty-twenty-four Sourcewell Impact Community Funding for Purchase of New Civil Defense Sirens.
So uh, nineteen forty-three is a different funding category. This one is not guaranteed. Uh, but uh, you know, we're putting in hope with the hopes that we get drawn. It's a lottery type system for qualifying applications up to fifty thousand. And uh, we're putting in for uh, new sirens to replace all of our existing ones that are quite dated.
Entertaining motion.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Doug, second by Roy, to approve Resolution nineteen forty-three. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Move on to item number six, consider road closure of community-centered parking lot, a portion of Fourth Avenue and connecting road to Centennial Drive, May sixteenth, from four to eight P M. For the bike rodeo.
Uh, in your packet is a drawing showing the areas that would be uh, closed off for bike rodeo. I don't know, Lacy, if there's any more information that you have that you wanna share? Be the helmet patrol.
Is there anybody else going to, any other organizations gonna be there?
Um, Rotary Council and the ninety-three Lady Lions Committee this year.
Nice.
Oh, good.
Nice. I'll move. Motion by Doug, second by Roy, to uh, approve road closures as outlined. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Brings us to item number seven. Consider recommending appointments to the City of Staples Charter Commission.
Uh, so in, in your packet is uh, uh, basically uh, sheet that shows what uh, we are recommending at the Charter Commission Meeting. Uh, I think it was early last fall, uh, September. Um, we had uh, Doug, Brenda, Jim Hofer. Um, were existing members and then we had two um, that, two vacancies that were created. Uh, so we advertised for that. Uh, we had Nancy Stevens and Greg Hales. Uh, both uh, indicate their desire to serve. Nancy was first, so she got assigned a longer term. Greg Hales was the last comer. Uh, so he has the shorter one filling uh, Katie Norris's um, slot, which the term of that ends in twenty-twenty-six, so.
Isn't there seven, Gerald? Is there seven on there, isn't there? I mean, not new.
Uh, I believe there's nine total, but they're staggered terms, so every two years.
Four and two years, yeah, okay.
Yeah. So uh, the process for this, uh, just to remind everybody is the council doesn't actually make the appointment. We're making a recommendation to the District Court Judge. I'm sure that this is the highest priority for the court system, but that's what it says in the state statutes.
And he knows everybody personally, so he can.
Right, so.
Yeah, she's out of St. Caudill. Well, she, it was a female years ago when we sent the last ones, isn't it?
Yeah, I, I think they've been doing it. Uh, this would be down on, on Long Prairie, I think.
Wow, okay.
But um, yeah, so if we can get a, a recommendation from the council to the District Court to appoint uh, the five individuals for those terms.
So I'll move. Second. Motion by Roy, second by Mary Jo, to recommend the appointments as outlined. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Brings us to item number eight. Consider approval of Resolution nineteen forty-four, authorize advertising for bids until two P M. On April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, for construction of a six-unit teehanger.
So a copy of the resolution is in your packet. Sarah Mattis uh, from S E H, uh, our engineering consultant is on the Zoom. Uh, included in your packet is, as I said, a copy of the resolution, just basically given the blessing to go ahead and get the project moving forward by advertising. And then also a copy of the plans um, for the teehanger project, so. If there's any questions that people have?
Where does that get advertised?
Designed or anything like that?
Yeah. Where does that get advertised at?
Um, we, we advertise um, in your, your local paper as well as uh, Finance and Commerce, and then online through our, our bidding system, uh, Quest C D N.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'll move the approval of Resolution nineteen forty-four as outlined.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Mary and a second by Roy to approve Resolution nineteen forty-four as outlined. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you for being here on Zoom.
Yes, great, thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
We'll bring us to item number nine, which is to consider approval of Resolution nineteen forty-five, approving plans and specifications and authorizing mayor and city administrator to execute the sewer and water main improvement project.
So a copy of the resolution, I gotta get these plans separated here. Uh, nineteen forty-five is in your packet. Uh, we uh, I think in uh, earlier meeting in March approved J and J Excavating to do the work on this, but uh, wanted to uh, make sure that we actually approve the project and um, the plans and specifications, so. Recommend approval of that. And this is, I'm sorry, this is out on Prairie Avenue for the industrial park, the stuff that's funded with the ARPA. Wadena County ARPA money?
Oh, yeah, okay. So I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion by Roy and a second by Mary Jo to approve Resolution nineteen forty-five. Is there any further discussion?
Why are we, why aren't we following the road? I mean, or the edge of the road or whatever? Isn't it? It veers off across, right? Is that what it's showing or not? Or is that just, maybe that's?
Find the um, drawing here. Basically, we have, we have sewer and water running all the way down Prairie. Uh, but in the industrial park, the new stuff to the north, there's nothing stubbed to the north. So basically, what this is doing is going out in the street, tapping into that sewer and water and stubbing mains uh, to the north. One would be um, just to the east of uh, Kurt Wilson's property, you know, between that and the uh, Farmers Union. And then the other one would be uh, down towards the west end, kind of um, I'd say across, cross the east driveway of the E D A, you know, somewhere right in that. Um, we had done a preliminary plat years ago and these line up on the, what would be the roadways out there. Um, so that water and sewer is available if development occurs or when development occurs.
Is that, that, you mentioned the Farmers Union, that, it almost looks like it goes right across that property or no?
What, what was that?
You mentioned Farmers Union? It uh, looks like it goes, is that that property that they bought that, that uh, east leg is going across or is that?
No, it, it's, it's to the west of that. We held out eighty-foot, um, I believe it was eighty-foot road right away. Um, between Wilson and Farmers Union's property.
Okay.
So it, it lines up with that.
Okay, I just, I wasn't sure. And that's, that's just, that's just water or water and sewer?
Water and sewer.
Okay. All right.
Any further discussion?
So I guess one more thing. We've got water and sewer in our industrial building out there, right? Okay, yeah, all right, yeah.
Yeah, just at the time that that was all extended out there, um, you know, I think um, Landco, which was Bob Lee and, you know, some other investors, I believe, owned that um, property to the north and um, you know, there was really no plans for it, so there was nothing stubbed up into that property.
It's kinda hard to, kinda hard, I assume one of those represents the sewer and one represents the water or that pipe on it? This map is kinda not too good.
Yeah, let me um, I'll show you what um, see if I can get this pulled up here and I'll, I'll show you what we've got out there and show you approximately where things are gonna be. Getting closer. Okay, let's see, how do I share my screen? Too far. So basically, so everybody knows our rapid server over here, E D A Industrial Building here. So the one sewer and water stub will tap off um, right here, just up into the right way and the other one will be right here. And that's where the, the loop roadway that was designed in that preliminary plat, uh, fall. So these, you know, these nice sized lots on the perimeter, um, and all those are moved.
Okay, what's the industrial property on the west end there? Where's that at?
Our, our building?
No, on the other side of this road.
Oh, here. Here's the west property, I have that.
Okay, and it goes that way?
E D A, yeah, I'll zoom up. E D A has a hundred and fifty-four acres up there. And we can see it here with the this black dash line that comes up, that field road that, that goes up west there or just kind of east property, I have that.
Wow.
Curves across here.
That's all, that's all E D A?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, we bought that from Landco, I want to say like two thousand one, somewhere back to that.
So like, when those pipes, I didn't wanna take up everybody's time here, but I'm kinda curious. Those pipes that run in there then, are they, they go straight north and then i- it's not depicted very well on this map, or is it gonna angle across like, like it shows on the map?
No, I don't, I'm not sure what, what you're looking.
This map right here? That came out in our.
Touch screen.
Way to go, Doug.
Scott, is the line that come off permanently to the mania? So it'll be coming off one here
And then it goes straight north and up to?
And then I go on very far. We're just getting up to where you don't have to tear the road apart, uh, in the future.
Okay, 'cause it kinda shows everything going at an angle there on that drawing or whatever it is. It's not really a map. Yeah.
Are you looking at where it says project location?
What's that?
Are you looking at where it says project location? Is that what you want?
Um, whatever came in our packet here.
Did you see this one? Here, Doug, it goes, it's, I think that's pretty, it's straight up here. That's the east one.
What's the page number in the lower right of the one you're looking at, Doug?
Okay.
It's right there.
Yeah, I'm trying to.
Yeah. Maybe I'm just looking at the easy ones.
All right, here's, here's the drawing I've been looking at. You know, so here's an example of what it's doing. It's coming straight.
Okay, yeah.
Straight north, but if you turn it like this, it looks like it's at an angle.
Yeah, no, this is definitely, I'll find it, I'll find it, I'll show it to you after the meeting.
All right.
All right, any other further discussion? We have a motion and a second. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All right, we're going to number ten, I believe. Consider approval of Resolution nineteen forty-six, accepting donation for the bike rodeo.
Uh, Resolution nineteen forty-six is in your packet, uh, donation of five hundred dollars from the Lions towards the bike rodeo. And uh, I want to thank everybody for supporting the bike rodeo. It's a great event and we've had a lot of donations come in for it.
So what's it, what's the total amount of dollars that have been donated? Do you have a total?
At this point, it was one thousand five hundred and fifty.
With this? Cool.
Yeah. Does that include the Rotary? Have we done ours yet? Okay. I can't, I can never remember if we buy the bikes directly from the bikes or... So you don't, you don't have money from the Rotary and the Lions have donated?
Slacking.
It's just embarrassing.
Aren't you happy you asked? We still have another meeting where we can accept their donation.
We will, we will. I'll bring it up tomorrow.
Entertaining motion.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mary, second by Mary Jo, to accept approve Resolution nineteen forty-six. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I understand.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, Roy, I understand. All right. That brings us to the committee reports. Uh, Public Works Commission.
The meeting on April second. Really, oh, I'm sorry. There's another round of GRIP funding. Um, early in the year, we had backed out because they had all these requirements on the funding. And now they've changed that, so um, we were putting in two projects, one again for the substation, which would uh, put in some switchgear and allow us to increase the capacity of the north substation. And another one, um, they changed some of the requirements, but we could uh, potentially get some of our areas that are overhead and in there in back alleys where we have no access to them, but they're, they're not real alleys, they're just easements and rightaways. Um, we have the opportunity to convert some of those to underground. The uh, the grant is a little different this year 'cause it's seventy-five percent granted instead of fifty, so we're looking at a total of a four million dollar project. It would be uh, three million grants and one million from the city. Uh, these are divided into two different projects and we have the ability to back out. They probably won't award the funding until um, October. So, um, however, we're, we're in the pool, but um, we'll see where it goes from there. It, it hasn't been accepted yet or anything like that. Uh, the wastewater department went through a compliance inspection recently, so that was with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. During their inspection, they noted two things, which they called non-compliance. Both of those were cleared up before the inspectors left. And then uh, coincidentally, um, our wastewater department was recognized um, with the Wastewater Treatment Facility Operational Award, which also comes from the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. It's, it's uh, it's given to um, treatment facilities that uh, have consistent compliance, or consistent compliance with monitoring, operations and maintenance requirements as well as uh, on-time and accurate uh, record-keeping, so. You're one of two hundred and fifty-three facilities in the state out of sixteen hundred, so. That uh, amounts to fifteen percent. Only fifteen percent received the award and we were one of them, so. Um, our guys do a really good job and they're very well organized. If you went up to either plants, you'd notice, I mean, things are in order, things are clean and things are well-maintained, so. Just a, a demonstration of their good work. Um, we'll have a presentation next month from Missouri River on the rate study. They uh, they have all the numbers. They'll uh, they'll give us a look at um, if we, if we add a generation, if we didn't. Well, hopefully we'll have some uh, more information on the generation thing too at the next meeting, so we will have uh, hopefully at least one presentation, maybe two. And then we we can make a determination on rates, we can talk more about the generation or we'll see, but. And then the Missouri River Annual Meeting is on May eighth or ninth. If anybody would like to go, let me know and I can make arrangements. And then one other thing, it's not on the uh, on the minutes of the report, but uh, if you're downtown, Second Avenue and Fourth Street, and if you notice white lines by the tree grates, I went out and marked all the ones that uh, that have, that are empty and then also marked the ones that have dead trees in them, so there's a fif- fifteen total that are marked, um, that will get filled in with concrete this year. That's all I have unless uh, anybody else has any questions.
Anybody have any questions? Scott? Thank you, Scott. Move on to open forum. Anyone here have anything for open forum this evening?
I do.
All right.
So um, Colleen Frost had invited the council and it was open to the public last night. She had a kind of an informational thing that tell everybody what she's doing, what her out, long-term plan is and stuff. And there was concern that there, that we couldn't have more than three people at the meeting. It wasn't really a meeting, it was just a preliminary thing she did, but anyway, so I did talk to League of Minnesota Cities and they said in small cities especially, you will run into that because there'll be, all of us could be in one place, down to Timbers or whatever. But you cannot go to that place with your agenda talking about any city council stuff. She said you can all sit at the table, but you can't talk about city council stuff. So I just wanted, you know, because I, I talked to you yesterday and I'm very excited with this. Just to let you know that it's gonna happen and it was okay.
Yeah.
And it was very, 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 she had, I mean, a bunch of the bachelors were there. She, it was, it was.
And she's gonna have it more often too. Next week, she told me she would have it.
She's gonna have it, she's gonna have it. Yeah, she's gonna have it because she's always getting people asking her, you know, what's your next plan or what, what, what do you plan on doing next? And she said she just, will continue to have these until everybody's kinda knows what's going on, but you know, she just had to be nice with the city council members or anybody from the city wanted to come and hear what was going on, just because a lot of the bachelors were there, Eugene, Joni and some of the others. Which was kind of fun because they brought a lot of stuff. Did you see that? They wrote this calendar and other stuff from like eighteen sixty-two and just stuff that he had put in Minneapolis paper. You know, trying to get people to support him way up there and get moments, you know, fourteen thousand dollars, which was worth millions nowadays, you know. It was, it was very interesting, but anyway, just wanted to.
Thanks, Mary Jo.
Yes, but I've been in, in places where council when people, when they're there and it's more than the three and people will ask them about s- something they've read and if, if we're all together, that's why I left. It doesn't matter. I, you know, I didn't wanna have the have anybody accuse us of something that we should not, and I can go another time. It wasn't like it was life-threatening or anything. That was my, my choice to leave.
Right, I just wanted to clarify that it, it wouldn't have been illegal for us four to be there and we were sitting at different tables.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I think it, you know, it, it depends a lot on the service.
Yeah.
Um, you know, you go to a few of them, and six out of seven of the council members are service people. Clearly, there's not an issue with that.
Right.
Uh, you know, I think in the case where there's invitation made to the council, um, you know, for people to come, you know, not knowing that other people are gonna be there.
Yeah, and it was all within the public.
Yeah.
But I always did, uh, you know, have it on the top of my head. Somebody to challenge us for open meeting law violations.
Right, yeah.
No, 'cause that could get messy.
All right, anything else on open forum? If not, we'll move on to city administrators' report.
Uh, a few things, just an update. Uh, last week, we did uh, give out a couple airviews for uh, the economic development director position, and followed up with additional uh, questionnaire pick and stuff with the applicants here this week, so. See how that turns out. Attended a couple of uh, days of training on Sourcewell for land use planning. Kind of nice to have that uh, right here in town available and free, so. Both trainings were worth uh, four hours of time spent. Hopefully, we'll never need to use most of what they, what the term is talking about, so. Arts Council, uh, had a meeting. We're not sure if that's a offensive arts council meeting or a meeting to keep the arts council going. We'll phrase it like that, so it's not voluntary, you know. Met the, the summer concert series is pretty well set. Only five uh, different concerts, but one. However, we continued to have a conversation about you know, what, what the community wants the role of the arts council to be abroad, um, and you know, continue to talk about individuals that would like to invite to come and find out that interest in serving in that capacity. And, you know, continue to talk about individuals that would like to invite to come and find out if they're interested in serving in that capacity. We will be meeting again. A Florida question of the council, just for a little bit of discussion, no action, but better contacted by Tarder Communications, they were interested in purchasing a piece of property over to the east of our electrical substation and right next door that communication has their little hut down there on South Side of Red Avenue. And locating their main facility, which is now located out south in that location. Scott, I've been talking about, is there a future use from, you know, expanded substation or generation? We'll feel like some piece out there, it's still got plenty between there and the south substation. So I wanted to bring it up, you know, before we pursued it. I probably will get drafted and general first group before we even incur any cost whatsoever against where it's going.
So is that charter or spectrum?
No.
That doesn't change anything within the state limits as far as their service or anything? They're already established.
It was kind of an interesting conversation with their development person because I had suggested that might be a possible location and they already have been looking at it.
Okay.
So just, you know, I don't know where all their fire runs and all that kind of stuff for their operations. But we thought, oh, we have a pretty good location to minimize, you know, big fire runs to try to connect.
Sure. How big a space is that?
It's a hundred and fifty feet deep between right and railroad and.
Right, three hundred.
Hundred and fifty, yeah, okay, a hundred and fifty, three hundred.
Two hundred.
Okay.
All right.
But if there's, you know, if there's no objection to us pursuing that, we're not talking price, we didn't talk any, you know, anything like that in a limited industry district, which is what that is, you know, that hundred foot is what they do like that.
I'm not opposed.
I'm not opposed as well.
That would be a hundred, a hundred, a hundred by three hundred or a hundred and fifty by three hundred?
One hundred by a hundred and fifty.
Oh.
Kind of see the front of the street, a hundred and fifty.
Okay. So they're going by half.
Yeah, and it turns the back of that, it kind of feels off and a bit closer to that. All right, I will pursue them. Met, last Friday, CJ Hall, who is the new Wadena County administrator, came over, he was with Ohio. He previously was on that Wadena County tour. He is interested in coming to the next council meeting and introduce himself, so go ahead. What about you, Joe? Nice gentleman. And this is, I'm going to break out. This is a, you know, a follow-up to the discussion last, at the last meeting related to the implication. Start council meetings. And do some research and this is basically modeled after Lucid Hutchinson, obviously. And they, Hutchinson had done the implication referred in council meeting for decades, going back and following the minutes of that, they were doing that, it's really significant. And, you know, back, you know, and I don't remember the history of all of it. There were some questions and some lawsuits, not with Hutchinson, but with other organizations that we went off with, it's reported, it's not by a patient, it's just a state, you know, they had Congress and they started very, they were doing that at the state cattle. And, but they, but Hutchinson didn't put a policy in place that I mean, previously there, you know, the equivalent of the ministerial association, their academic association coordinated the whole thing. And they had some concerns that, you know, that group maybe didn't include all, you know, whole broader religious organizations. So it's basically, it's an organ coordinated in the law, you know, based on the allegations and newspapers and this. So it's a communication to, you know, all the organizations that are in there along with the copy of policy. And they basically kind of laying out what the intent and purpose of the implication would be. And inviting kind of participating, you know, here's a schedule of every council meeting that happens here, you know, pick what ones you'd be interested in doing. And, and if the council approves that list at the beginning of the year, you know, every, every council meeting will be a whole who's scheduled, not that that can change throughout the first year, but and then if there are instances where somebody can't come at last minute, you know, it'll be the mayor's call. You know, skip it altogether, do all the cycles, have anything. But the implication, and I can say, I'm not looking for action tonight, but I want you to take a look at this we can talk about it again at the next meeting, but the implication is directed to the council. Not towards, you know, the public or people in the audience or staff or, you know, council members or not ones. Given the implication, staff are doing it, we're not you know, censoring or editing the prayer ahead of time and that type of thing, you know, they follow the policy. If they don't, talk to them and say, you know, we have a list, we have a policy. I don't anticipate that that's going to be the issue, but if it is, we got it. So anyway, read through it, think about it, next meeting, talk about it.
Thank you, Joe.
Working on it.
Yeah, thanks.
That's all I have, any other questions?
I move that way adjourned.
Motion by Roy, second by Doug, to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Being adjourned.